And then we're going to get with IPS, our new insurance group, and review. They're going to see what they can do from a negotiating standpoint. And our expectation is to come back next commissioner's court, the 28th, with a recommendation, or recommendations for the court to consider. The first one, I think we have to sort of walk the night. Does it open up like a regular night? Do you have to put these back in the boxes they came out of, do you think?
Yes.
Okay, this, the first one is from Ethna. And it looks like a full slate of proposals. So that's all we need, just to pick this. Ethna, that is the first one. I'm going to cut myself with this aggie knife, particularly wearing a long, long tie. I'm sure since it's an aggie knife, it's a dull. We have a hot pool of people here. All right, the second one has three different containers. This is from Cigna, S-I-G-N-A. And I think they're all repeats. All right, this one from this formal bid. Mutual of Omaha. Is that a health insurance? No, typically, I don't know what it is. Texas Association of Accountants, they told me the other day that they were going to submit. And this is health through Blue Cross. What type of issue? I'm trying to figure out. Something is always, doesn't possibly count, and this is block vision, another supplemental, vision insurance. They're a pretty good group, I've used them before. Doesn't that flash cover that thing?
We have a small plan for Humana to get covered vision, which you could.
This is the Standard. This one is called the Standard, Health and Welfare Benefit Proposal, Dental, Vision, Life, and A-D and D, and L-T-D. That's everything the kids are thinking. Committee, we're going to have fun.
Is that a ten? Yes, there's ten.
Well, most of them have vision and blood insurance.
How many health?
We've got Ethna, Cigna, Humana, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield, so all the.
And then Standard.
Standard, yeah.
This is a dental and vision plan from Guardian.
Be me up to the insurance. Don't lose insurance coverage.
Medical, dental, vision, life, A-D-D, optical, optional, this is U-N-U-M. This is stack order, the union. I left my brush to act aside. Oh, it's a good old dime purse. Isn't that for taking a tag off the cow? Okay, this is sun, life, financial, health and welfare benefit proposal. Sun, life, financial. That'd be good work. Uh-oh, this one's fancy.
Yes.
This is Lincoln Financial Group, health and welfare, welfare benefit proposals, life, A-D-D, voluntary life, long-term disability. So it seems like that pretty much covers it all. I mean, we have no point.
You have those. Yeah, okay, there's something in there. Watch out, it's coming back. Fragile, handling here, that you're trying to help.
Nice doctor. I assume that's going to be everything, that would be nice.
Is that fifteen? Yes, fifteen, okay.
Health and welfare, medical, dental, business, life, accidental death. If there's anything breakable in there, I don't know what it is. Get yourself into a job.
You think it's not?
I mean, do we have?
This is B sixteen.
This is a heart for, also for benefits. Medical plan, insured medical rate sheet, dental plan, this looks like this is, covers everything. Optical, accidental death, oh, we've got. So again, we will refer these to IPS, and we will review them with them, and our plan was again on the 14th to come back with a recommendation on the 28th, sorry, on the 28th to come back. Yes. The committee and, Judge, I don't, I don't think we formally ask our auditor to be a part of the insurance committee, but I would like to ask that she be added to the committee.
Okay.
And then we, I don't know when we'll set our meeting.
And then who all makes up the committee?
It is Jan and Thomas.
Dawn.
Don.
Paul.
Don, myself.
And Lauren, and now Vernon.
Unless there's someone else that you want to, unless you want to replace me, which would be fine. So the attorney says we need to make a motion, so I'll make a motion that we table reviewing the bids and that we make our recommendation on the 28th to the court.
Motion, commission, all right, say the commission. Maras all in favor. Okay, item five, approved bonds, Cynthia Denise Hinaosa, O'Nallya Dela, Paula Bruger, Laura Castro, and Monica Lempick. File, Mr. Maras all in favor. Item six, can I take your report handout, everybody got a copy of this? Item seven, present hearing on annex one, two, three, update, comments, questions. Morning, sir.
On court, who are you?
You're looking pretty fancy, is this a farm presentation?
I'm going to go to the next one. Lentin, you're actually on 10, did you want to make any comments on the one, two, and three annex before then?
No, no, we're still going through our procedure.
Okay, we'll wait until we get down there. Item eight, Dana Eric Caldwell, county attorney, discuss whether the planning group like to request steel bids for the lease of 131.177 acres, County Road 310, old landfill property, and if so, terms of that lease.
The property has been leased to Mr. Pedcock for the preceding five years. The court entered into a lease agreement with that property at December the 1st of 2008, which is scheduled to expire December of this year. I guess really, the question is, do you want to go out for bids, it's a cattle ranching lease, do you want another to go out for this bids for the five-year lease, or do you want to do an annual lease that renews with notice or cancellation?
Dana, he does, he is interested, he says again, correct?
Yes, he is.
And we've had no troubles with him whatsoever that I know of, anyone have any idea? And we can't break the lease at any time with just minimum notice coming on?
At, no, not unless we build it into the lease, I mean, this is a non-renewing lease because it was a five-year lease.
Well, personally, I suppose anybody might have, I'd like to see the five-year lease again, but with a clause that for any reason that we have, that we need to break the lease at that point in time, that can be done, so.
For all or a part of?
Right, for all or a part.
And, I mean, that can be built into the bid, of course, and of course that won't go.
Do we have to go out for bids?
We do.
Okay.
We do. And if you want to renew it, it does have to go back out for bid. So as terms of that, if y'all would want it to go out for bid, as a five-year lease with an option to terminate or modify?
All or any part of it.
All or any part of it, upon notice, of course, that would go probably both ways.
Certainly, any conflict, he rang up here and said?
Well, in fact, Judge, he called me last week, and he said, what is y'all's pistol chute? He said, I want to go over there and trail around for y'all. He doesn't have to do that, but he said he wants to do it. And he always moves his cattle out whenever we have an event out there.
I don't anticipate anybody else, that he joins the place, I don't anticipate.
I think he owns the property on either side, so on both sides of.
But we have to go up for bids?
Under the local government, what's serving you.
Hold you a second. Mission, all in favor.
And that is, you know, who knows, we may not do anything in the next five years, we might do animal control and decide to locate that there, so we need that.
Paid and proved, I mean, who knows? I know, again, late now, but working with a deal a couple of years ago with some of the monies from a disaster to do an animal shelter type thing, some emergency thing, you know, which is federal fund, so, I mean, you never know what might have come up, so.
Do you want me to publish that request for bids?
Yes.
So, thank you.
Okay, item nine, Don Wallace, Diane Hartman, discuss take action on a letter from Hartman Insurance Agency to the court. Well, Dana, did you do any research on that?
I did speak with Brent, with IPS advisors regarding the last meeting, and he, in our conversation, he had said that this, it's not typical, I mean, even Mr. Wallace had said in the last meeting that, not atypical, that you can change agents at any time, and that upon the change in agent, new agents typically get the remainder of the commission. And that's kind of where he left it. They've already started preparing the trust for the county, they had already requested their proposals, and so they had begun working and felt that they had for them to earn that commission, and that was, that was not atypical in the insurance business.
Well, I want to reiterate that this, as far as integrity of ourselves, that I disapprove of the way things was done. Agents throughout the history of the time I've been here have made proposals and bids and everything without being under contract on, or for the different insurances. And that may be the law as far as the way it works, I'm uncomfortable with it because morally it's wrong, and I just want that said and on the record that that's the way Okay, I guess there's no action to be taken. Item 10, Lentin Don, discuss the Texas Historical Permission Program, often affects as it pertains to the county courthouse.
Okay, so since we last met two weeks ago, we've had a little bit more feedback from the Texas Cultural Commission. They're actually preparing, and they gave copies of that original master plan that was submitted by the county about eight years ago, I guess, I did a bit more doubt into that, like, why is the noise falls and the password background, the historic portion was prepared, I guess, by one of the members here in the county, was very complimentary on that, they said it was very well done. But I guess at the time, I'm not exactly signed and the design intent, what was going to happen to the courthouse wasn't really that clear, or not, so they were like, it said that was very poor on that section, and that's the reason why I failed. So now hopefully clear of any, I gave copies of it, so I can actually see for myself, we can all review it again. So I guess the big question that we had around on that was, if we are funded, any portion of money is filed into THC, that's the start mission, you know, what sort of, what string we're capturing there? I've gone through my site, I've gone through the documentation I have, I got a lot printed out here. Basically, they, again, very documental, there's nothing in writing that actually states that if money is given, that they have all sovereignty. The questions that I've had, and I've explained what we're intending to do and what things would follow up for the interior, the courthouse, the interior, the courthouse basically, we do it as is, we make it functional, put a carpet tile down, creating all unified color scheme for interior, we try to keep all existing doors, windows as much as possible, insulating the exterior windows, but giving them a, what we actually pay them or what we're intending to get them, and they said that's exactly what we want. So, well, okay, the question then, again, is, if we do the two-party, and we get emergency money is for the foundation, what does that do? Well, it's two, it's two problems from that. We're not going to go with grant easement, which you have to have that in place to receive the THC plan. Our current easement, which basically is a, it's an easement that grants the THC ability to then have, not control of, but have, to work in coordination with us to receive their opinions on the kind of matters. We have to do that anyway, because the site it sits on is historically, you know, format. So there's no ways about it, we have to send anything to them, which we've been doing anyway to be good stewards and to keep a good relationship with them. So we will have to establish that grant of easement back again. Their opinion is, is that we are in the running, very much over lens. Their opinion is, they cannot force us to do anything. I've been very clear about, we're not removing any of the clerk off the backside, but I'm moving maybe, that building is staying as it is right now. I'm explaining to them that the fire department are very good, and they're not going to force us to put the spring system on the first floor, which is a separate floor only, because we've gained access to the active space. So I said, you know, they can be in city authorities making concessions for us, and we expect them to do the same. I said, we have a variable budget, so what we're doing to attract a big cost of budget, so any shenanigans over well, now we can have to part the building off. They've said that that is not the case, which I was very clear about my first met with them, uh, months ago. To have it in writing at this moment in time from then, we're not going to get it, because there's nothing that, I explained to them, I said, I've worked with the state boards in the parts of the world, and I think it would help them around if they clarified what their control was, as much as they could. For example, their reason was, well, we can't put that in writing, because just say the county decides that they want to put a six-story county facility on that site, then we would have half earned, we wouldn't approve that. However, the historic structure itself, as it is right now, what your plans and intent are, no problem at all, that's exactly aligned what we want to do. If we apply for a full restoration renovation, that cuts into that whole, we'll have taken the stucco off and all that, which we're not going to do there either. So that's about as much as I know about, and as much as they can tell me at this point in time. I still think the, the warm feelings side I have, and much better feelings side I do, because they know my stance, and they know the county stance on what we're not going to do. I think the, I think the gap was worth it personally. We know that money is there, so I'd like, we're sending the black hole, we know money is having a portion for the emergency fund. It will, will not be made for decision until April anyway, April 24th, I believe. But that's as much as I know.
Anyone, correct me if I say something wrong here, but I talked to Senator Vanity, I shared that with you, just the other day, she called me back after she had talked with the historical permission. What she basically said was, that it looked like about $400,000 available for the emergency, I think you'd ask for $700,000, but she said that, that Uvalde, Uvald County courthouse, and I guess that's probably, as far as the emergency money. But gave some instructions as far as our architect keeping it in sync with the master plan and all, for the future monies. What that will probably mean, and like I said, if I'm wrong, correct me on this, what that will probably mean, it looked like a good chance for her of getting a $400,000 or something. And more, but it will probably slow the process of the courthouse down in that second phase, because with, and of course, by then the election will be held, and we'll know whether or not we, or we can go with the rest of the thing. So that's kind of where it's at, I mean, for what it's worth, I mean, she, she, she is not our senator, she was available there at the DeCog, and I spoke with her, and I told her I hadn't contacted Senators after any, she said, well, I called her to see and said it was an opportunity, time to visit with her, and she hasn't been, it has a lot to do with the historical thing. And then I called Representative Kempel's office and talked to Brittany, Whitney, and asked her to put a call in over there, and she agreed that she would put a call in on behalf of the county. So it's strictly, you know, we had. It's strictly, you know, we had to make a decision now whether we're going to risk that.
We have to have this done by December the first, is that when we have to have this application complete?
Yes, well, January.
January?
Yeah, I, I would say end of December. Now, there is another caveat to it, too. There are monies available to help cover the master plan. There's like a separate, separate grant that's available, so I'm also going to pursue that as well.
Will that come out of that $400,000, or is that separate?
I think it's separate. And that's the way that the, um, the way it reads there as well, that they don't take that out of it, it's a separate factor, therefore I'm sure they have a separate pocket for that.
And that won't, the $400,000, if we get approved, won't affect anything for the interior, if it's for the emergency, uh, the structural stabilization?
That's all the money they have right now, they don't have any money to courthouse's renovation wise, it's purely demarcated for emergency funds, search of foundation systems and wallfall.
But they shouldn't tell us, they wouldn't tell us what will happen in the future, because they don't know.
Yeah, I mean, for the color, or whatever we do for the window.
So if, if, yeah, if, 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 so there is no money available for renovation?
Correct. That's expected after the April 15th.
Yeah, so if, I, I guess the, the question I would have, I, I personally think that it is, um, worth the gamble, particularly if there's a chance for a grant to help offset the cost of the master plan. My concern is that if all we get from them is some assistance and $400,000, I don't want to minimize that, if we get assistance for that, as long as we're not giving away what it is that we feel like needs to be done with the rest of the courthouse, because there's no money available for that at this point, and by the time money is available, assuming that the bond passes, it will probably be passed all over.
I was looking the same thing, I, I was thinking, okay, just say we don't do one, we don't go for the master plan. Where we sit now, we, we still have to send anything to them for review, because we sit on the historic side. The, the, um, the grant easement has, has passed, that's gone, so they really don't have us on that one. But I'm thinking, okay, so I was trying to get definition from them, what does, going back to them and, and saying that grant, what does that do? And then going back to what we're hoping to be doing or not doing, I don't know what power, decided that it was for the interior, I've had a consistent line from them after the, how many times I mentioned it, proper duty for the interior. That's really what, that's what they want to happen to it. If they have for restoration, monies, you know, and we were going for that, I was holding it, but I said, we want, okay, look, go back in there like it was before and continue on.
Stabilizing it obviously is very important, but if we all we do is stabilize it and nothing else, and hopefully they'll see that, then, if not, then what we could.
If, if the bond stays, doesn't pass, that wouldn't affect this grant. I mean, are we still obligated to go forward with the courthouse? We, we, I know that, just by what I'm saying, yeah.
We're not obligated by anything but THC, still, we have sovereignty, we have decisions to do what we want to do in this county. They can't force us to do anything. They were using the example of, if you wanted for a six-story office building next to it, they'd have half burned, because that wasn't part of the original master plan schedule, and we probably need to go to arbitration, or go to some government entity to deal with that. But that's not what we're about, they know that's not what we're about. I said, draw the line, decide what we're not going to do, I've been very clear to begin, we haven't changed our course and our direction, or we want to do the progress, we just want to make it safe and, and affordable and move on, under it.
And I don't know if you'll compare with this, but this is my take on it. The, the, uh, the Historical Society once had a lot of full power and whatever, and people become kind of fed up with across the state and the legislation of real life, that funding has been down for them. They're trying to make the corner as far as getting back in good graces of everyone.
Do you know, you know why, why he's arguing with that at the beginning? I know, I have a long time ago, I said, that's the problem, I said, you shot yourselves in the foot in your votes, in that people are like coming to you, and we're very proud of our municipality in Texas, but if you become so honorary over issues that, you know, you want to control what local government does, what jurisdiction wants to do with their buildings, that's just not right. And that's why they're typical.
And when they visited the courthouse there, I mean, of course, I know a lot of, they was trying to get us awesome to help with their thing, but they were very high on our courthouse and historical value, and so.
But what we've also done, we've also taken the control, to be honest, away from them to start with, because if we've gone the route from day one, of submitting master plan and going down that route, you, you're sort of, um, almost trying to let them lead the process, so then you sort of, but we've, we've been very clear on that, that this is what we're going to do. Now, if you want to get on board and, and, and join with us and on the right, that's fine, but if you, if we started, and we hit the right way, and you know, my opinion from the beginning is, I've had, I didn't have good, good experience with them on what they're looking, and I said, I'm not, I'm not playing this game. So we've gone in with what we want to do as a county, and if they want, if they want to help us out, we're very grateful for it, but again, very clear that we're still going to do what we want to do.
Judge, I think that we should go forward.
Motion, Mr. Wallace, Mr. File, all favor. Now, we've covered that, let's go back to item with the annexes one, two, and three?
Yes.
And I, it's kind of unfair to you, because I haven't talked to you about it, but it just occurred to me that there's been some talk on the websites and things about the fact that we spent $700,000 thus far. Could you just, off the top of your head, give us a, what's this been spent for? Just, I know it, it's not going to be complete, but a crux of it, so the public will understand where we're at.
We've done, um, we've all planned for, um, the proposed neutral justice center. We did, we started with the initial study, um, which wasn't a big spark that, I don't know, it's not seen a thousand, but we may have spent our initial study to start with.
That's already.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Initial, we did the initial study on the, on the existing courthouse, fire stabilization issue. We then moved into doing the, um, the overall master planning, and then going to the dual building support.
Let me interrupt you there, because it's important. The initial study, Commissioner File actually helped with his fact that they had to be excavations beneath the courthouse at many places to determine the damage to it, where it was.
That's correct.
And the quality of the brick, and so forth, so on, so it's quite extensive to.
It was very extensive, I mean, we, we got these test bits in three locations there. We brought in a, we, we did a forensic analysis of the building, we also brought in a engineering or waterproofing experts, structural, civil, to look at how we're going to fix the foundation. That was sort of the basis to our initial cost estimates on stabilizing and making the existing courthouse viable for the future.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, 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 I'm actually, I didn't ramble there, sorry.
No, but I, I just want to make sure that people understand that it's, it's not a primitive thing that is thought out, that the x-rays of the slab, of these slabs over here, to make sure that they withstand the.
That's correct. So then when we came in here, we started the master plan of what we could see could happen to this city park as a whole, which included us walking through, going to see the existing structure that we had to deal with, existing foundation, we then went ahead and did the, the testing for the, I said, the slide act tray, to see if it would withstand, amending or changing the structure for the new criminal justice center, which it, which it will. We then had to do civil work, because we had to get existing grades of the site. We were trying to, we were trying to utilize as much of the existing grade that we had, we could massage some, that existing very complex swale that we have on the backside, trying to keep all that in place, so our fellows would work around it and work over it. So we had to get the surveying done for, for our grade work. And then we went into the process then of doing the architectural, um, okay, architectural, structural, civil work for the new justice center. So that was for, for the, the, where your public county used to be, along the bottom, the, where your cafeteria was, on the bottom side there for.
And we do have floor plans for all the emergency.
So, and, and, and that was another thing that was mentioned in that, that we had no floor plans, and that, that's been done. We, we, if you remember, we brought them, probably.
Now on our website, but.
Months ago.
Oh, we, we had, we, during the entire design process, I probably wrote drawings out here eight, 10 times, I would say, so we've been very, we've tried to be as.
And in, in the formulating of these plans, you, you met with each department heads and, and some of the department members, determining the needs of the judge, the district judges, to determine their needs in the courtroom room, met with the sheriff and myself and all with the.
District attorney.
Jail commission as far as the side of court, the holding.
We've also gone to Austin, and Matt Lee, Texas Jail, that's on the scheme as well.
And, uh, I know I've covered a lot of ground, but I, I want the public to understand what, what has been put into this project, that it's not just, you know, it's, and, and we. Go ahead.
So they understand too, you're not getting all the money, the $700,000, and engineer's been involved, Huber was.
We've had your technical tests, and some engineering, we've had the catastrophic plumbing, we've had structural, so we've had a true multi-passive, multidisciplined team involved. We've been with one that the, we have to supply, and we, we corral them all together, because we're the ones that are directing traffic, but who needs to give what. And of course, he's also dealt with the, with the light as well. So we're designing, doing the light, it's going to be in this building, and we've met at length.
So it's, it's, it's really the, the, um, design plan for three locations.
Yes.
The library, the new justice center, criminal justice center, and the old courthouse.
Yes.
And along with the work that was done to look at the slab, the structure over there, there was some time and some money spent looking at the structural integrity of the old courthouse, because that was an issue, there's, there was no point to go in and rework, um, the slab, so to speak, if the integrity of the rest of it, you know, wasn't there, so there was time spent with that.
A lot of time we spent probably just analyzing it, probably five, four weeks, I would say, up, up in the attic, not with the foundation, but we looked at the attic as much as we could physically see, looking at the roof, this is, this is existing structure, the, like it was, the roof had compromised or not, and most of it is in, the rest of the world, it's not that shape, most of it has been a problem created by that one corner of the sand subsidence.
And just for the history of things, when the courthouse was basically condemned, and we had to move out, we was fortunate that this facility, the school district, was available, we leased it for one year, and they was able to purchase it, it cost $1,75,000, $1,75,000. Included this block and a half block across the street. We, in looking at the needs of the county, which the courthouse, we, we had applied for grants before for the courthouse, because we'd outgrown it basically, the district court, it would take a major modification to secure that courthouse, the whole district court in it. This facility is available here, as Mr. Len just pointed out, uh, Mr. Thorne put up, pointed out before, concrete and steel is skyrocketing in price right now, and to having the slabs in place with the infrastructure, we're doing three projects that are all essential to this county's growth and well-being, at what the cost of any one of these projects to stand alone would cost, and, and you can check the other counties that have the construction going on, and understand that, it's fiscally responsible thing for the county to, uh, to do these projects, and, and so we can get on with the operations of day to night.
And, and they're not extravagant programs, I mean, we're, we're, from what I've been able to tell from looking at the plans and conversations, is that, you know, we're not, we're not building a Cadillac, or a Mercedes, or whatever it is courthouse, you know, we're, we're going to have, it'll be nice, and it'll be, in car terms, it'll be a nice Ford or Chevrolet, and we're not making something this grandiose, we're making something that is very functional, and, and for a district court, court, uh, courtroom standpoint, very necessary. The conference that I was at last week, one of the presentations was on courthouse security, and the problems that, just brought all the problems that you hear about politely, but the problems associated with district court, and what could happen, and the, and the need for security, and it's something that, that is needed, and it is important to me that, that we take care of the county. From the standpoint of why I'm a commissioner, I'm a commissioner because of where I think the county is going, and what it is that maybe I can be a part of with these other gentlemen, and making certain that we are there. The last census, we were $43,000 and something, when you look at the growth for the last two decades, if you take that growth out the next two decades, you're looking at right at 100,000 people in Wilson County. And so if you're going to do something like this, you can't do it just for today, you've got to position it for the future, or we've all failed. And our job is to, in my opinion, to look at where we've been, and use that as a gauge as we look at where we're going, and what it is that we need for this citizen.
You're exactly right, I mean, we had a, we're always following information that that comes over, and they sent one over on, on county growth, and in the top, one of the county counties in the nation, Texas had four in the top 10, Hays being one, one subclass, if I'm just saying, it just gives you an idea of where we are as a. Interesting, actually, what you mentioned, the whole Cadillac version, we would be doing Wabu, for example, we, we try and do something different, we've been trying to do something that is, is right for jurisdictions for counties to reutilize existing buildings, to keep local government where it has and where it has been, in a, in a close location of one or two from existing city power that it used to be. You look at Hayes County, they've got one of that spanking new courthouse there, up by the, on the drive off to the left there, and I think the price per square foot for that came in around about, uh, $280, $300 square foot. I mean, we're looking at a number of, I don't know, we said about $1.25, $1.30, and the same was in Wabu. Now, we had some judges that sat in both, and we always get the, well, you know, we don't have this in these, but the longer we went through them, the more we went through the process, and the time I spent with them already pays. I said, you have to look, you have this because you have this, and you have, you're able to have that because you've got this, you've got this, and, you know, the penny starts to drop, that what we did, what we're doing is, I mean, is, is amazing really, and it's much needed, and it's the right thing to do, it's just the right thing to do.
Well, things just really fell into place for us, I mean, with the school being available and being two blocks from the courthouse, keeps everything downtown Florisville, I mean, it's a great thing for Florisville itself, right away to county, and, so, I just wanted to, oh, and for anybody that will go to the county website, the floor plans are now on there, after, I saw it the other day, I called Mr. Thorne and asked him if he forwarded the small version so we could put on the website, which he did. There's a cost analysis, there's a, there's a list of the, of the tax rate from 1998 through today, we've always been in the point four, it's varied for different reasons. I think we, we, when you compare that to counties of like size and around it, that does not have sales tax, you'll find that we fare very well with the other county. Now, since the Eagle Ford, this past year or so, Adespo's of Corners have been able to drop their tax rate considerably, they, they've got a huge amount of tax base that comes from the oil industry that's gone on there, and I'm, I'm glad for them. But what I'm saying is, in comparison, though, we've always been very, and our tax rate should fall as we get more of the oil industry coming on, the rail yard, and so forth, so on. We can't guarantee what it'll do, we don't know what the oil industry is doing, but it, it, it should.
Along with that, we're just going to, you know, back to the population growth, we're just going to become more and more urban. Do you think that may have changed the next point?
I know I was asked, doing a few things by a lot of people.
Just to make a change to text point, because I know I was asked doing community funding by a lot of people. So if people understand, there was a flyer being put out and around, you know, we're going to do the courthouse, we're going to do a justice center, we're going to do a library, we're going to do, we build roads, and we're going to have a dog and kennel, but that ain't going to happen, we need enough money to redo roads and, and a pet or dog kennel at this time, that's not part of the bond, I mean, the main thing is the courthouse and the justice center and library remain paying.
And the explanation for that being on there is in fact that our financial advisor asked us to have a planning session, so that if there was a carryover, what projects would we want to look at in the future? And of course, the, uh, animal control is something that will have to be addressed sometime.
Well, if, if, if we get the four hundred thousand dollars from the Historical Commission, that might play into it down the road. That might offset some, and there might be money decided, but it's not a guarantee, brother.
Salasik is sad.
But, but the truth, the truth of the matter is, that the projects themselves are pretty much one of the absorb the eight-five. And, and the only reason that it was reran with the animal control and the loads on it is because we could not change it once we ran it the first time. If we had our rathers, it would not have been ran that way, but that's the way it is.
And, you know, you made a comment about what Hayes, you know, did for a courthouse, new courthouse, you know, people say, well, why don't you build a new courthouse? Well, again, you're looking at what, probably thirty million versus what we're looking at. You know, people say, well, it can't cost that much, well, I mean, it does.
Can you give an idea? Part of the, the simplest form of construction on a, on a public front, in terms of constructibility, were probably scores. We all agree that Bell's Center Block, that place, same here, when you look at the price of schools in, in San Juan, I mean, they are eighty-five, hundred, hundred and fifty million dollars, that are basically this truck, this construction. A little bit fancier, but basically the same principle of the CTE, Harvey Block, it's, it's, it's expensive enterprise.